Stand by. Okay. We want, before I get started in Congress meeting order, we do have a different person in the control booth. We have Nigel Woodberg. And I was trying to see you, turn the light on so I can see your thumbs up when I know to get, there we go.
Okay.
All right, I will now call the Blue Springs City Council meeting for June twenty first, two thousand twenty-two to order. We will stand. Observe a moment of silence and I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. Want to welcome you in attendance as well as those that might be watching on cable TV at a later time or right now. Next we have a confirmation of a quorum.
When I state your name, please state that you are here. Councilmember Kayler?
Here.
Councilmember Levisay?
Here.
Councilmember Fowler?
Here.
Councilmember Erickson?
Here.
Councilmember Edmondson?
Present.
Councilmember Culpepper?
Present.
Mayor Ross?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Next we have the committee's consent agenda unless their items need to be pulled, accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kayler?
Aye.
Levisay?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next we have a public hearing on Oaks at Woods Chapel.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter into the record. City council information form dated June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two with the following attachments. Staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication and the examiner on May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, one hundred eighty-five foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within one hundred eighty-five feet of the site, copy of letters sent to said property owners, title for land use section, Blue Springs code of ordinances by reference, two thousand fourteen comprehensive plan by reference, and bill approving the planned unit development concept plan. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, thank you. City report. Yeah, anybody that's going to testify, why don't we do this at one time? Why don't you stand and be sworn in so we don't have to interrupt and do it at that time? Anybody that's going to be testifying at all tonight, stand and be sworn in. Okay, now we can proceed.
Adair Bright, nine oh three West Main Street, on behalf of the city. Before you this evening is a request for an amended PUD concept plan for the Oaks at Woods Chapel retail development at twelve oh five Northwest Woods Chapel Road. The site is located just west of Northwest Woods Chapel Road and about three hundred and fifty feet south of Northwest South Outta Road. The lot is part of a PUD approved in two thousand one, known as the Oaks at Woods Chapel, which includes Quick Trip to the North and CBS to the South. The PUD also includes undeveloped land to the west of Northwest Thirty-sixth Street. The site is approximately one point two seven acres and is currently zoned GBPUD. The purpose of the PUD concept plan amendment is to allow for the development of the site to accommodate a multi-tenant building with options for restaurant, both fast food and dine-in, and retail. The previously approved PUD did not specify that a restaurant fast food use is allowed on this site. Therefore, the PUD must be amended to allow for that use. Access to the site will be available through a shared access on the northwest corner and two access points on the south off of the CBS drive. Since the site is being developed, sidewalks are to be constructed along Northwest Thirty-sixth Street. The site meets all building type standards for a general commercial building. All setbacks, building height, and coverage requirements of the proposed building have been met. Minimum parking requirements have been met and the applicant is providing two more spaces than required. The drive-through lane meets the minimum eight stacking spaces requirement and all drive aisles meet the minimum twenty-six foot requirement and parking spaces are eighteen point five feet long by nine feet wide. Bike parking has been provided just south of the building adjacent to the parking lot. The multi-tenant building will consist of an approximately sixty-five hundred square foot, single-story building. Exterior materials include a mix of ephist, thin brick, simulated stone, and wood panels. A twenty-five foot landscape buffer is required along Northwest Woods Chapel Road, which has been shown and met in the conceptual landscaping plan. Along Northwest Thirty-sixth Street, the applicant is required a two point five to three point five foot screening with plants, which has also been shown in the conceptual plan. No buffers are required along the north and south property lines since the site is adjacent to the same zoning designation. There have been no requested modifications to the UDC. If this application is recommended or is approved by City Council, the next step will be a PUD final plan, site plan, design review. The applicant has provided staff with what appears to be proof of a shared access agreement, which is required prior to approval of the final plan, but we still recommend keeping that as a condition of approval. Planning Commission had held a public hearing on June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, in which they recommended unanimous approval of the PUD concept plan amendment. Staff recommends approval of the plan with four conditions and I'm here for any questions.
Are there any questions from the council? Councilmember Fowler?
Yeah, I have one for staff. Appreciate the presentation here, but this has been in and out over the years. Is there any, is this part of any economic development location? Sa- sales, sales tax, anything?
Yes, this project is part of a TIF and a CID. The TIF that is currently activated there expires in two thousand thirty-seven, but it is also a one percent CID sales tax.
So are we expecting that this applicant will be coming forward with a proposal?
No, it would fit within the existing TIF plan for reimbursement. So for most of the TIF, the, it was the building of the roads and prepping the site, so this is just finishing up that project.
So it's basically already negotiated with the original TIF?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to clear, I didn't know if they were going to be coming back for anything else or not. This is all they're going to be asking for then. Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Councilmember Erickson?
Could you repeat or explain the landscaping issue again? There's, you said there's no landscaping required on the north and the south side, is that correct?
Correct, our code does not require any landscape buffers to be put in along the same zoning designation when they butt up to each other.
So in the graphic, we have some trees, are we then not to expect that to happen?
These ones down here can be expected to happen, they're not required, but it is part of the open space requirement. It doesn't meet the buffer requirement, it's for the open space.
Then one quick one, the, the north road that gives, or goes out that way, whatever, the exit? How much space is between that and the other road that's existing to the north? Or is that it?
This is the current entrance into Quick Trip right now and what was plotted with this was a shared access at this location. If that answers the question at all.
Okay, that makes sense, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, is the applicant present? We've already been sworn in, you just come up to the microphone and ask any questions the council might have, anything that you would like to add beyond what has already been explained.
And if you could please state your name, address, and confirm that you've been sworn in.
My name is Jacob Hodson, I'm with Olson at thirteen oh one Burlington in North Kansas City, Missouri. And I have been sworn in. As the applicant, I'll, I'd have to say is that we've worked with staff to make sure we've provided everything that you needed in this plan and we agree to all conditions and I ask that you approve this PUD. Thank you.
Any questions of council? Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor, so a common question at this point is, do you have any tenants yet?
No, as of right now, we do not have any tenants for the building.
And this building kind of is oriented to where the, it's, the back is facing Woods Chapel, the front is, is on that outer road. Has, maybe this is a staff question, but signage, does that, has that all been worked out? Is that something that still needs to occur?
We haven't worked out signage yet, we said that if the signage did not meet requirements, we would include that with the next set of applications in a master sign plan.
And we will, and we will submit signage plans when we go to the final PUD.
Anyone else?
Your Honor, if I may?
Yeah, Councilmember Erickson.
So in, in looking at the drawings, and I'm just kind of going off of that, it looks like from the front that you've got like four possible spaces to lease out, approximately what sixteen hundred square feet per space, something along that line?
Yeah, we haven't determined exactly how much the ratio is, but yeah, there will be four retail spaces.
So on the backside of it, the back image, there's just two doors on the backside. So my question would be, is this, are you going in with this, the idea of just splitting the building in half? Or will there be new, other doorways on the exits on the backside?
That is yet to be determined, yeah, so, and I think the reason the, these doors you see in the back are for mechanical. So they're not necessarily entrance into the, the space itself.
Okay, so to based on what information you got as far as who might come in or how you want to do the space, we'll, we'll see some different drawings possibly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's all I need to know.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you for your testimony. We will go to the public, anyone in order to like speaking support of? Support of, opposition to, opposition to, bring it back, council, got any comments before I close this public hearing? Seeing none. We close this public hearing, next we have introduction reading of bill number forty-nine eighty-eight.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number forty-nine eighty-eight, an ordinance approving an amended planned unit development concept plan for the Oaks at Woods Chapel.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign?
Second reading of bill number forty-nine eighty-eight, an ordinance approving an amended planned unit development concept plan for the Oaks at Woods Chapel.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Levisay?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number five one two zero.
Next we have another public hearing on Oaks at Woods Chapel, the vacation and sanitary sewer easement.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter into the record. City council information form dated June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two with the following attachments. Staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication and the examiner on May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, one hundred ninety, one hundred eighty-five foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within one hundred eighty-five feet of the site, copy of letters sent to said property owners, title for land use section, Blue Springs code of ordinances by reference, two thousand fourteen comprehensive plan by reference, and bill approving the vacation. This is all we have to offer for the record.
All right, thank you, staff report.
Adair Bright, nine oh three West Main Street, on behalf of the city, and I have been sworn in. The next item on the agenda is a request for the vacation of a sanitary sewer and landscape easement for the Oaks at Woods Chapel retail, which is proposed to be located at twelve oh five Northwest Woods Chapel Road between Quick Trip and CBS. The request is for the vacation of a platted fifteen foot sanitary sewer easement running through the center of the property. The easement was plotted as part of the Oaks at Woods Chapel subdivision, however, infrastructure was never installed in that location. The location of the sanitary sewer easement makes the site difficult to develop and there is already an existing additional sanitary sewer easement. The applicant is also requesting to vacate the landscape easement along the eastern property line. Staff supports this request since we no longer require landscape easements on flats and the site is still required to meet all UDC requirements for screening and buffering. Staff does not feel as though anyone else will be negatively impacted by these two requests since the adjacent sites are already developed and the easements no longer serve a purpose. Planning Commission held a public hearing on June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, in which they recommended unanimous approval of the request. Staff recommends approval of the vacation with two conditions and I'm here for any questions.
Any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you. Okay. The applicant's still here. You have anything to add?
Jacob Hodson with Olson at thirteen oh one Burlington in North Kansas City, and I have been sworn in. I agree to all the conditions that staff have for this case and we hope that you approve it, thank you.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you again.
Thank you.
We'll go to the public, anyone in order to like speaking support of? Support of, opposition to, opposition to, close this public hearing. Next we have the introduction reading of bill number forty-nine eighty-nine.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number forty-nine eighty-nine, an ordinance vacating a sanitary sewer easement and a landscape easement.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign?
Second reading of bill number forty-nine eighty-nine, an ordinance vacating a sanitary sewer easement and a landscape easement.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levisay?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number five one two one.
Next we have public hearing on Hoot Al Ridge, amended planned development concept plan.
Mayor, the city has two exhibits to enter into the record. Exhibit number one, city council information form dated June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two with the following attachments. Staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication and the examiner on May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, one hundred eighty-five foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within one hundred eighty-five feet of the site, copy of letters sent to said property owners, title for land use section, Blue Springs code of ordinances by reference, two thousand fourteen comprehensive plan by reference, applicant's presentation to, dated August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty, planning commission, and bill approving the amendment to the planned development concept plan. Exhibit number two is our photos and videos, standing water produced by Councilmember Ron Fowler on June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, staff report, Mike?
Yes, thank you, Mike Mallon, on behalf of the city, nine oh three West Main Street, and I have been sworn. This is a public hearing being held, requesting of the applicant and property owner, Justin Larkin of JW Larkin Properties, for consideration to approve an amendment to the approved planned development concept plan for Hoot Al Ridge. The specific amendment being requested is to reduce setbacks on lots fifteen, twenty-two, thirty-three, thirty-six, thirty-nine, forty, forty-two, and forty-three. The Hoot Als Ridge subdivision is generally located north of Major Road and east of Adams Dairy Parkway and contains forty-four single-family lots that are built to the neighborhood lot, or neighborhood detached house, large lot development standards. The applicant is proposing these amendments to the setbacks in order to help accommodate some of the larger housing that has been not only constructed so far in the subdivision, but that is anticipated to be, continue to be constructed in the subdivision. The specific requests are outlined here before you are to reduce the rear setback from thirty feet to twenty feet for lots fifteen, thirty-three, thirty-six, thirty-nine, forty, forty-two, and forty-three, to reduce the minimum side setback of fifteen feet to ten feet for lots fifteen and twenty-two, and to reduce the minimum front setback from thirty feet to twenty-five feet for lot fifteen. Pull up the plan here. This is the proposed site here, outlined in the black and white hashed line. The Hoot Al Ridge subdivision contains all of these forty-four lots here. The specific request is to amend some of the lots that are kind of irregularly shaped, in particular in terms of the lot depth and how deep they are from front to back. The lots that are being requested are lots fifteen, let's let me zoom in here a little bit further. Lot fifteen is the one that's up here in the southeast portion of the subdivision. As you can see, that lot has a pretty irregular shape for the large lot setbacks that are applicable to the lot. Lot twenty-two, which is down, just over in this area here, is a narrow lot that does not have a lot of width in between it and so trying to fit a house of the shape and size that has been currently built and likely to be built in the future is being requested to reduce that rear or the side setbacks on that property. Lot thirty-three, over here off of this cul-de-sac on Claude Court, is a little shaped, pretty narrow in terms of the depth, when you have a thirty-foot front setback and a thirty-foot rear setback, it really kind of squeezes down that buildable area for the shape and that size of homes that are being built in the subdivision. Same goes with lot thirty-six, lot thirty-nine, lot forty, lot forty-two, and finally lot forty-three. Staff reviewed the proposed modifications. Against the code, the, again, the proposed reductions are to the rear setbacks, the front setback, and some of the side setbacks. For the detached house, large lot, the minimum lot area is twelve thousand square feet to one acre. So these are pretty large-sized homes throughout the forty-four lots. And the front setback of thirty feet and the rear setback of thirty feet and a corner side setback really does impact the ability of some of those lots to be developed. The previous Hoot Al Ridge concept plan that was originally approved did approve some modifications to some of the lots as part of that original approval. Those were predominantly to allow lots that were, one lot that was smaller than the twelve thousand square foot minimum required, that was lot fifteen that we just looked at. Another modification was to allow a larger lot in the subdivision, greater than the one acre maximum lot size for that building type and that is the, the, the main big lot down on the south end, the three and a half acre lot where the developer has built his own home. And then the remaining modifications were to the lot frontages for the lots on the cul-de-sac. Those lots being on the cul-de-sac, it was hard for them to meet the minimum lot frontage and so a reduction was approved as part of the original Hoot Al PD concept plan to allow reduced minimum lot frontage for some of the lots on those cul-de-sacs. Those are the only modifications being requested, those only, those three that I mentioned earlier. Staff reviewed the concept plan requests against the criteria in the code and finds that the PD, amendment to the PD concept plan is compatible with those criteria in the code and therefore does recommend approval. The planning commission heard this request and recommends approval as well. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, or Mike from council, councilmember Kayler?
Mr. Mallon, is this the original outline or the plot plan of all the lots that came before us?
This is the original, yeah, this is the, the Hoot Al Ridge concept plan. There are no changes to the plan itself, only to the development standards contained within the plan.
Okay, so what size homes were originally going to go in here and now, obviously are we changing sizes?
We are not changing sizes in terms of the minimum required by the code. The UDC required based upon adjacent subdivision classifications that the minimum lot size, or minimum house size is eighteen hundred square feet or Class E for all forty-four lots in the Hoot Al Ridge subdivision. There is no change proposed to that.
Okay, so basically all forty-four lots, this was under the assumption prior when it was brought to us that it was all going to be one size or that type of size, is that correct?
I believe that the, the minimum sets the, the low end of what the, the houses can be. I think there was maybe, and I think the developer could answer this, but it was my understanding that the original idea was that the houses would be in the two thousand square foot range. But I think as time has progressed, the, the large lot sizes and the location along Adams Dairy Parkway has led builders and potential home builders and people buying homes and wanting to build a home to build larger houses. And so it's pushing the envelope of the existing setbacks for the, for the subdivision and in particular the lots that they've requested the modifications for.
So then it's safe to assume that the whole subdivision is going to be a step up to bigger homes in, is that correct?
Yes, that is safe to assume. The minimum lots, the minimum house size is not changing, but the actual house sizes that are being built are quite a bit larger than the eighteen hundred square foot minimum.
Okay, I'll have something for the applicant when he comes, or she.
Anyone else, Mike? Thank you, Mike, we'll go to the applicant. The applicant present, might you come up? Now you were here earlier and were sworn in.
I was not sworn in.
Okay, need to be sworn in.
Yeah, it's Justin Larkin, eight oh five West Main, Blue Springs.
Okay. Any comments you'd like to make, otherwise we'll go to the council, ask questions. Councilmember Kayler, you want to continue?
Yeah, I'll, just if that's all right, Your Honor.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
So, I'm trying to get my mind on this. We changed because the builders in the subdivision decided to build the homes bigger, so you're going to want the setbacks different to, to accommodate these bigger homes and we're not building the smaller homes that are in there, is that correct?
Correct.
From originally?
Yeah. The homes that are being built currently are roughly in the three thousand square foot range and the problem is, is the setbacks on the cul-de-sacs, the side setbacks are forcing us to have to push the homes back further to accommodate for the width. And we already have a lot of pre-approved plans that are very popular in the subdivision that just won't fit. They're close, but it's pretty tight, so a lot of the builders have asked me to see if we could get some of these setbacks extended because again, the homes in the three thousand square foot range are what's really selling in the subdivision right now.
Okay, and I understand, I understand the setbacks and stuff, but my understanding is going from fifteen feet on the side to the ten foot on the side, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, yes, that was for one of the lots, yes.
Okay.
For two, well, for lots, for lots fifteen up here.
Right.
And so that would apply to this side setback separating lots fifteen and fourteen and then the, that side setback request from fifteen to ten feet would also apply to lot twenty-two down here, which is a pretty skinny lot.
Okay.
Anyone else? Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor, I guess first let me compliment you on, on the houses to the west of Lynn Street. Very nice houses going in there, I've heard positive comments, really looking good. My concern is on the east side of Lynn, there's like seven lots there from nine to fifteen and I, I think you've probably seen that the drainage on that, in that area is really not working. There's quite a few things, stagnant water, mosquitoes buildup. Where are you at on that process of getting that fixed?
So we've looked at it a couple times, the original engineering drawings have that water flowing naturally to the front of the street once that street is filled. Currently there's only one home and there's three actually there under construction right now. So with each lot, from the south side to the north, it'll divert a certain percentage of the water coming off the hillside. But I mean, that's, that's water coming off of the farmland that we really have, you know, no way of actually controlling the amount of water. And it's not necessarily the amount of water there, it's actually groundwater as well that we found, there's a rock shelf that runs right under those lots. So again, what we've advised our builders to do is we're actually adding extra sump pumps to also help filtrate the, the excavation of that water. But again, we've gone in and I've actually trenched along lot lines in few places and it's actually helped divert a lot of that water. I've actually worked with one of the, the homeowners there that's currently on lot twelve to do so and they said it did drastically improve their situation. But over time, as those lots get built out, that's the process, is a certain percentage of, of water that's coming off that hillside will be diverted to the front due to the crown shaped of the lot lines.
Yeah, the, even in the back of the property, I guess I've got a couple pictures up there if I could go through those and just kind of show current state, because current state has got some stagnant water there that looks like it's going to be a problem. I don't, I don't know how much, Minister Key, what, what staff can do in this situation as well. There's some pictures of the stagnant water, mosquitoes, who may have the Zika virus, things like that. And I know that's probably coming up from the ground because it sounds like if you pump it out, it comes back. The, it also goes out to the street, is that, yeah, there's one outcome there. There's also a storm sewer that is virtually completely filled up now with silt and it's actually growing some really good grass.
Do you want me to bring that up?
Pardon me?
Would you like me to bring that up, councilmember?
Yeah, yeah. And so I, I, part of my request here is to staff to
About that one, it was the other one.
Review this situation and see what we can't do for the residents over there. And I, I'm mostly, I tell you, I'm concerned about the, well, here's the small video. You'll see all the water going down the street that direction, plus there's a storm sewer immediately to the right of this pipe and then there is what's growing in the storm sewer right now. And then if we look to the south here a minute, we'll see a lot of water still draining down the street and that's just not normal, as dry as we've been like this past Sunday to have that kind of water flowing. It's kind of tough to see there. But that's what I'm hoping that we can get some resolution on. I know that the current people that have put some basements in over there, you know, their, their basements are already filling up with water and, you know, they're concerned with that.
Over where?
I, I think to, the two lots to the north of the generous house, they put in some basements over there and those look like they have filled up with water, although they hadn't been rained.
And we've done some research and we've found that really there was some decisions made by plumbing and different people that were involved in that house that probably were not sufficient for, for that type of home. If you go to that house that you're referencing right there, they actually installed two sump pumps and they don't have any water issues in their basement. And that's what they did not do on the north side. And I met with them and we went over, we went over the designs that was approved by the city because they had asked us if we were following code. the city because they had asked us if we were following code, and we showed them, went through it all, and they they still found that there was water getting into their basement, but it was, again, it was pressure from underneath.
What I also worry about is is when the final grading comes to these lots, when other people that have had water issues, it seems like they they grade for their lot and and if it impacts the neighbors, it impacts the neighbors, and and it just looks like we need a bigger solution to this before this gets too far out of hand. So that's why I'm going to ask staff to do what they can to move forward with this at this time, and I'd hope that the.
No, I agree. The final grade on these lots is very important. That's the, you know, that's the overall process when you're building these homes is you have to account for not only your neighbors to the west, but your neighbors to the east, south, and north, and and the intention is these lots should be crowned. That water should divert to the lot line. This particular homeowner, I do believe they did put their fence right on the lot line, and this is actually where I did dig that trench, and that water has been, it's it's not completely dry, but it has drastically improved, and it wasn't, like I said, it wasn't a a professional trench. I just went out there one day, met with them, and tried to divert some of that water just in the meantime, because they did have water in their grass that we were trying to save. So that lot next to them is currently under contract, is going to be built upon, and so is the one further south. So as those homes get built and proper grading is in place, it should divert some of the water coming off of the hillside, but again, groundwater, there's not a lot we can do with groundwater.
Maybe in the backside of the lot, you, I mean, there's, it almost looks like that's the way that the water goes right now, it looks like behind.
And that's what it's intended to do, yeah.
Close to the farm area, as you mentioned.
Yeah. That water is supposed to either be caught between houses, moved to the front to the storm, or it's actually supposed to flow to the back of the houses and go all the way to the north where it again will be caught by a ditch and then head to the storm.
All right.
That was the original design.
Yep. Thank you, your honor.
Okay, so so what we, what you'd like for to do is for staff to work with the developer to see how we can mitigate that issue?
Right, right. I had not really worked with staff as much, but I would like to ask that at this time they see what can be done to help improve this for, and I'm just talking future residents. The people that are buying the lots today, they're going to start living this issue too, and in fact, I think I know one of them is is here tonight, so.
Okay, any other comments? All right, thank you. We'll go to the public. Anyone else like to speak in support of, support of opposition two? Opposition two, do we have any speaker, peers, forms?
She's project engineer, she says she doesn't need to speak.
Okay. Seeing none, bring you back up here. Anyone have any comments before I close this public hearing?
Your honor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Mike, if I could just ask one question, on Lot fifteen, that lot narrows to the back, and I would imagine if you've got that large of a house on that, are they still going to be required to keep the setbacks for like the drives? That lot looks like if you put a big house on there, that that house would be sitting right along the edge of the street, not have much of a drive in it.
Uh, yeah, there, this lot will still be required to meet all of the the side or the corner side and the front setback.
Okay.
Um, I believe, let me double check that real quick. So the front setback is being proposed to be reduced from thirty feet to twenty-five feet so the house can sit closer to Lynn Street along here. The, there's no reduction to the corner side setback, but the side setback will allow the house to be pushed further to the north there.
Okay.
And then there is a reduction into the rear setback, so it it, those setbacks being proposed will expand the building footprint compared to what it would have been if we would have had a thirty-foot side, rear setback, a thirty-foot front setback, a thirty-foot corner side setback, and a twenty-foot side setback. It would have really made that a very small house.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Kay.
So with the setback going to twenty-five feet on the front side there on Lynn, wouldn't that cause the driveways to be smaller then, correct?
The house would be closer to the street than some the other, than the other ones that aren't requesting that, but the driveway length of twenty-five feet or the front setback at twenty-five feet is our standard setback for a neighborhood house detached lot, which would you would find the majority of the houses in Blue Springs have a twenty-five foot setback. So that reduction from thirty feet to twenty-five feet is just going to move the house closer, but it's not going to make the driveway shorter so that it won't accommodate a car.
Okay. Thank you, your honor.
Anyone else?
Your honor.
Yes, councilmember Fowler.
Relative to the lot setbacks, I guess specifically to that, I can see where the, if the, whoever owns those lots wants them to to build a bigger house, I'd hate to restrict them from that, so I'll do that, but relative to the the few lots that I am talking about on the water, I just do hope we can find some resolution, because I've I've listened to property owners, once they've got in and they have stormwater issues, and it's it's a long-going problem and it really weighs on them, so.
Any other comments before we close this public hearing? Seeing none. Close this public hearing. Next, we have introduction reading of bill number forty-nine ninety.
I'll introduce, your honor. First reading of, sorry, first reading of bill number forty-nine ninety and ordinance approving an amendment to the planned development concept plan for Hootouse Ridge.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
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 Discussion, all in favor, right?
Aye.
Same sign.
Second reading of bill number forty-nine ninety and ordinance approving an amendment to the planned development concept plan for Hootouse Ridge.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Cole Pepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Levisay.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number five-one-two-two.
Next, we have introduction reading of bill number forty-nine ninety-one.
I'll introduce, your honor.
First reading of bill number forty-nine ninety-one and ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement between the City of Blue Springs, Missouri and Flanders Asset Management LC.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
The second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, right?
Aye.
Same sign.
Second reading of bill number forty-nine ninety-one and ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement between the City of Blue Springs, Missouri and Flanders Asset Management LC.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign appropriate ordinance number.
The second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Edmondson.
Aye.
Cole Pepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Levisay.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number five-one-two-four.
Next, we have another public hearing on Flanders Asset Management LC.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter to the record, rezoning of property, excuse me, city council information form dated June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two with the following attachments, staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, one hundred and eighty-five foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet of the site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, title for land use section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, twenty-fourteen comprehensive plan by reference, applicant's presentation to August twenty-four, two thousand twenty, planning commission, and bill approving the rezoning. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Mike on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Mike Mallon, nine oh three West Main Street on behalf of the city, and I have been sworn. This is a public hearing being held at request of the applicant property owner of Flanders Asset Management LC for consideration of a rezoning, to rezone the property from its current Jackson County zoning designation of light industrial to a city zoning designation of GB or general business. The property is located at the southwest corner of Brookside Drive and Seven Highway, outlined here in the black and white dash line. The property is currently vacant. There are no development plans at this time. This is simply a request to provide the property with a city zoning designation rather than a county zoning designation. Under the current UDC, anytime there's a rezoning request, a general development plan is also required. However, at this time, there are no development plans, and therefore, the applicant and staff are requesting that that general development plan requirement be waived until such time that there are development plans for the property, and at that time, the developer or property owner, whoever wishes to develop it, would have to go through that general development plan process through city council. The rezoning to general business, in staff's opinion, is appropriate, given the zoning of other commercial properties along Seven Highway, in particular, across the street and to the north. The requested rezoning meets all the criteria in the code for a rezoning request, including conformance with the comprehensive plan, ability of the city to provide services to the property, and the an appropriate zoning designation given the surrounding properties. The planning commission heard this request for the rezoning and recommended approval, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
Just a little one. Do we need to make written note that we're, or do we need to ask for an amendment or whatever to waive that development plan, or do we just assume it?
It's it's part of the staff report under the the planning commission staff report, so that will follow it along with it.
Go follow it, okay.
And we don't condit, put conditional, conditions on zoning or conditional zoning, so we will just, you know, staff has made a note of it, it will go the the planning commission approval, or the staff report that's attached to this council information form, and from the planning commission public record, the two public hearings would, the fact that it has been waived by council will be denoted in that, and so that will carry forward with the property.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none. Thank you, Mike. The applicant present? Want you to come on up? Were you, I think you were sworn in initially, so want you to come on up to the microphone?
I was, but I'm happy to be sworn in.
I thought you were already, you weren't here when, I thought you were stood up.
I hadn't planned on talking, but since you asked me up, I'm happy to do it.
Chris, I need you to sign me swearing in testimony about giving this case to get through, so.
I do.
Okay, he's going to stand for any questions the council might have.
Could you state your name and address?
Dave Flanders, fifty-four thirty Mohawk Fairway, Kansas.
Okay.
I'm just going to say, your honor, that with following the prior motion, you were annexed annexed into the city and welcome, so thanks for joining the City of Blue Springs.
I want to compliment you all on your efficient council meeting. I was on a council that was much less efficient, so thank you all. And I have to compliment Mike, he and my brother have worked on this for ten years, I don't know how many years, but it seems like a long time, so we're looking forward to being part of Blue Springs.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the public. Anyone else like to speak in support of, support of opposition two? Opposition two? Counsel, any comments besides we're just glad he's doing it?
Yep.
Yes.
Thanks for the feedback, yeah.
All right, so we will close this public hearing. Next, we have the introduction and ring of bill number forty-nine ninety-two.
I'll introduce, your honor.
Okay.
First reading of bill number four-nine nine-two and ordinance approving rezoning property from Jackson County zoning to GB general business for the Flanders Asset Management LC.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
The second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, right?
Aye.
Same sign.
Second reading of bill number forty-nine ninety-two and ordinance approving rezoning property from Jackson County zoning to GB general business for the Flanders Asset Management LC.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
The second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, right?
Aye.
Same sign.
Second reading of bill number forty-nine ninety-two and ordinance approving rezoning property from Jackson County zoning to GB general business for Flanders Asset Management LC.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
The second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Kayler.
Aye.
Levisay.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Cole Pepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number five-one-two-five.
All right, we'll move on to the next item. Dwelling chapter three fifty-three tax abatement application in his current form is no longer under consideration, so we'll move on to the next item. Introduction reading of bill number forty-nine ninety-three.
I'll introduce, your honor.
Okay.
First reading of bill number forty-nine ninety-three and ordinance reappointing municipal judges and restating compensation therefore.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
The second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, right?
Aye.
Same sign.
Second reading of bill number forty-nine ninety-three and ordinance reappointing municipal judges and restating compensation therefore.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on the second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
The second?
Second.
Discussion, yes, for councilmember Erickson.
I I think I know the answer to this, but I want to be clear. In the in the council information form, the last sentence, it talks about employment, employee benefits, health, dental, vision, and deferred compensation. They are aware of, and we are aware of, that that deferred compensation is only for them, there's no match, correct? Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, first reading.
That was second.
Oh, we're in the second already?
That was second. Time flies.
Any other discussion, roll call, please.
Councilmember Levisay.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Cole Pepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number five-one-two-six.
Okay, next we have discussion on the Health Department, local public health authority. Who's going to head that up? I know there, are you going to start that off, Mike?
Start it off, and I'll, if I have any questions, we'll defer.
Okay.
This is a council-generated item, and the the request from staff before council this evening is to get direction on the inclusion of an additional Health Department investigation, contracting out those services and including that in the upcoming budget. Staff currently is in the budget development process, and it would just help us out if we, if council were to direct us in that, or direct us in the direction of whether or not we needed to allocate those funds in the upcoming budget.
Okay, so staff needs to do their due diligence and then come back to us, because I have some questions that need to be answered.
So, eh.
Because cost, responsibilities, duties, when you don't have a pandemic, what do you do?
Correct.
You know, we don't want them sitting around twiddling their thumbs, there's got to be some work if we're going to, because I mean, salaries are going to be high, because you probably got to hire hire somebody with medical experience, more likely a doctor. So, yeah, there are just a lot of questions that I need to be answered and 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 that I can wrap my man around before we proceed with something like that, so.
This is just giving staff direction to spend the thirty-three thousand five to investigate, correct?
Correct. that'll be proposed to council in August, uh, in order to hire the consulting firm or the, the attorney group that would do that investigation and hopefully would provide us answers, give us some sort of a, a financial note attached to part of that investigation and what that would look like in its kind of the full, complete picture. Um, staff also needs some of that direction, uh, legal guidance as well.
Great.